Good evening and welcome to the November 9th, 2016 meeting of the Milton School Committee. As is our tradition, please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag and our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the agenda, um... Under the superintendent's report, I'm going to move the SEL job description discussion under Finance Subcommittee. I'm going to move up the Health and Wellness Subcommittee update right after the superintendent's report. I am going to defer the discussion of school committee goals until next meeting. As the superintendent was not able to be here, I'm going to defer superintendent's evaluation discussion until the next meeting. And I'm going to defer discussion of fiscal '18 contingent and non-contingent budget categories and priorities until the next meeting. Under Policy Subcommittee, I'm going to defer the first reading of the administering medicine to students policy until Dr. Donahue tells me to put it back on the agenda. I'm going to defer approval of minutes. And under Executive Session, I'm going to defer negotiation strategy for non-union personnel and deployment of security personnel until our next meeting.
Does that motion?
That is, well, I don't really need a motion, but...
I also would like to move Transportation and Traffic the next meeting for a point.
Okay, great. And with that, um, Maureen, do we have anyone for Citizen Speak?
Yes, we do.
Great. So, um, turn it over to our able Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Human Resources, who will be doing the superintendent's report.
Thank you Chairman Walker. I'd just like to begin by sharing what a successful day we had. Yesterday, Election Day, we had our district-wide professional development day. Milton educators truly appreciated the opportunity to collaborate on curriculum, on assessment, on a number of initiatives at the elementary level. There was a focus on our new standards-based report cards. Teachers were able to access the new technology that we're using to, um, to, um, that we use to create the report cards and to record the grades. They were also able to work on the benchmarks for each of the terms and, um, and on writing assessments as well. The middle school participated in a variety of sessions. They have professional learning communities that focus on a choice of topics. Some of these topics included executive functioning, positive behavioral interventions, inclusion, teacher leadership, and supporting reading across the content areas. The high school departments all met focusing on curriculum and assessment. And some of the departments created a variety of workshops on topics and different content and instructional practice topics. For example, the Humanities Department had sessions on Quizlet, online live classroom conversation, Google folders, SATs, and historical context in literature. Another department, for example, the Science Department, they had sessions on NIE-ASK, on SMART goal inquiry activities. They had an IEP review, inclusion strategies, and another topic, another session topic was engagement in higher-order thinking and questioning. Additionally, we had some district-wide professional development activities. While most of the activities were building-based, we had some district-wide trainings. Our English Language Education Department participated in training for some of the required assessments that have to be administered for screening of students. Our Phys Ed Department, Phys Ed and Health Department, visited the native public schools where there was a wellness conference. They were very excited about participating in, um, the, um, in themes around interdisciplinary roles in adopting physical activity as a learning tool. And they looked at best practices and research in the areas of physical education and health. We also had select special education staff who participated in COME training. And, uh, so those were our district-wide offerings, but it was overall a very, very successful day, and we truly appreciated the opportunity to have this time for collaboration. So today, our, um, at the, at Milton High School, we had the National Honor Society induction ceremony. We want to congratulate all of the new National Honor officers and members. We would like to name those. The offices who were, um, who were part of the ceremony today, and each one of them spoke. We had Delphine Giraff, Benjamin Corson, Morgan Chandler, Bailey Cook, and Rachel Tomazuski. Congratulations to the offices of the National Honor Society. The induction ceremony brought new members Andrew Osieri, Thalia Bennett, David Brundage, Cameron Clayton, Courtney Dillon, Gregory Hebard, Elena Millwood, Sidney Noyen, Morgan Smith, and Andrew Steele. Congratulations to all of these students. We also had a, um, another very exciting ceremony today. It was held right here in the studio, and it was taped for cable television. We had three students from Milton High School who signed letters of intent to play a sport with Division One schools. We had a live audience, and we had parents here to celebrate with their, their, um, student athletes. We would like to congratulate Sam Jacobzak, who signed with Northeastern University for baseball. We had Maya Adley sign with Boston University for crew. And we had Collette O'Leary sign with UMass Amherst for track. So that was very, very exciting today. Lots of wonderful things happened. So that's not all that happened today. We had WCVB Channel Five's Chronicle here at the Tucker School. They were here this morning. They were interviewing staff and observing some of our programs. They were especially interested in our French immersion program. This visit resulted from Milton being acknowledged recently by Boston Magazine as one of the best small cities in America. So that led them to contact us and ask for a visit. We will keep you posted as to when this feature will air on, on TV. There are several Veterans Day activities planned in the district. Some have been ongoing this week and most are planned for tomorrow. At Milton High School, we have students who will be performing as singers and musicians during a Veterans Day ceremony. There was also an essay contest, and this was won by Alexandra Kelly. Her winning entry will be read by her at the Town of Milton Veterans Day observance on November 11th. At the Pierce Middle School, they are holding the First Annual Veterans Day Coffee tomorrow from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. All are invited. It will be in the Pierce Library. Families are also being asked to fill out a stat to honor a veteran. At the Collycott School, there will be an assembly tomorrow at 1:45. There will be a patriotic sing-along. Student work will be shared. Additionally, Curry College is hosting a drive for toiletries for veterans, and Collycott is the site for donations. At the Glover School, teachers have been sharing selected articles with the students all week, and they have planned individual classroom writing and drawing activities around these articles. They're also being shared with the whole school during daily announcements. Announcements include additional information about Veterans Day. That has gone on throughout the week. Students are dressing in red, white, and blue in honor of Veterans Day tomorrow. And finally, the principal will be reading My America to every class. At the Tucker School, they have been working all week on a tribute in the cafeteria that follows in line with the children's book, America's White Table. And at the Cunningham School, there will be a coffee social at 9:00 a.m. It will be in the cafeteria. Invitations have been sent to all families. And there will be a flag raising ceremony in the front of the school, and this, uh, this will be with a military honor guard.
What time is that?
That is at 9:00 a.m. in the library. I mean, in the cafeteria, sorry.
Flag raising?
Yes. The, oh, the flag raising, I think, will follow the coffee. We don't have the time for the flag raising, but somewhere, sometime after 9:00. So there will be no school on Friday, November 11th. On November 15th, Milton High School will have a cabaret at 7:00 p.m. in the high school auditorium. And then finally, our next school committee meeting is November 16th. Thank you. I did want to, I'm sorry, I did want to share with you our, a copy of our professional development schedule so that you can see how comprehensive the planning was for this day. Pass that along.
Can I just add something?
Yeah, sure.
So I had the pleasure of attending last Saturday evenings, the ceremony put on by the Hathaway Methodist Church where our leadership team and superintendent and our principals were honored for their commitment and work on diversity, and it was a lovely event. And you didn't mention it, so I wanted to make sure...
Thank you very much.
...that we mentioned it because it was a really wonderful event. Thank you.
Congratulations.
So at this time, we would like to introduce the Tucker School Site Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I am in the middle of our school. We have Captain Ruggers here. We've been doing a little bit of work. Thank you for having us. We have to do our budget presentation for this evening. We were, so briefly through our school goals, from the school improvement plan, talk through our identified areas for improvement, current action steps, and then our budget request. So just to tell you a little bit about Tucker School, I know we've been here this year, but just to share a little bit, we are at approximately 435 students now, preschool through grade five. That's grown quite a bit. When I started, I think we were at 365 students, so we've added in the preschool, but also our student body has grown quite a bit. I think we are pretty close to capacity, K to three in our classrooms. We are student body and faculty, but really prides itself on diversity in every way, and I think that's something that we really value as a small community. The district programs we house are the half and the full-day preschool, which was piloted and is now a full-fledged program. And we also have co-taught classrooms in grades three through five. We have been working to create partnerships around us. We have one with the BU School of Social Work that's new to us this year. We have a social work intern that's working with our adjustment counselor, our ongoing partnership with Harvard, having two graduate students working around diversity and inclusion with us. 1647 family engagement, the home visit work. Historic New England comes in and works with our preschoolers, bringing authentic pieces of family with them, bring it to life even at age three and four, and planting more as our outdoor classroom partnership.
So our school goals are, uh, this is something that we've shared with you before because this was part of the school improvement plan that we spoke about last year. So these were goals that were developed in collaboration with the site council, the faculty, the diversity committee, and the PTO. And I'll walk through them briefly. So the first goal is really the same as the district, just aiming at high levels of achievement across our entire student body, making sure everyone scores in the proficient and advanced category in the state assessments. Goal two is a literacy goal, and it's specific to what we've identified in our own student body. So we want to work toward all of our students reading at or above the benchmark by the end of grade three, which is such an important time for future success, and also making sure that all students in grades K through five can read and respond to texts as, as measured by all the internal, um, internal assessments. That's just so that all of our students, regardless of challenges or advantages they have, can come out of Tucker as excellent readers. And then the third goal is a community-building goal. It really ties into what we like to call the Tucker Way. It links to the terrific playground project that many of you have seen in person that, you know, that brought community members and stakeholders to Tucker to really improve our environment and create something that the entire community could enjoy, and it's already been a great success. At recess, we have this fantastic soccer pitch that the kids are using, plus painted hopscotch and four-square on the playground and structures they can play with. It was a sort of dirty field, and now it's full of cool play structures with more to come, and we're hoping for a community build day in the spring as we finish, as we wrapped up the bulk of our fundraising. But it also includes, this goal also includes mentorship programs that we put into place, some parent-to-parent that are new this year, and also some mentor-to-student programs. So really, again, making sure that this community embraces our entire student and parent, uh, you know, the population.
We broke this up into two areas. So the first one is what we presented a little while back when we talked about our data areas for improvement, and then also in working with our site council, some additional areas we've generated. So first, narrowing the achievement gap between subgroups is definitely something we are looking at ongoing. We have quite a few subgroups at Tucker School, and we really want to maximize the learning for all of our students. Looking at our ELA performance overall in grades three through five, we're doing that through a district analysis that Kat will speak a little bit more about and you've heard about through Lectio. Looking specifically at our fourth graders, we really found a large gap between their internal performance and how they did on the park assessment, and looking at where there may have been a gap. And then grade five science performance, we tried out one approach last year. We want to continue to fine-tune. We didn't see as much bang for our buck as we would have liked. Other areas, I think, really mirror the things that have come up previously, but looking at the academic enrichment, sports, all of the ways that students at Tucker are participating across the district and opportunities, across town and opportunities, and figuring out how at the school level we can support that, and also continuing to maximize opportunities for social, emotional growth and learning for our students.
So before I talk about our current action steps, we were talking as a site council, and I just wanted to take a minute to thank you as a school committee for the change this year in our 45-minute special blocks for physical education, Spanish, art, and music. It's allowed us to really utilize that common planning time and have teacher face-to-face planning sessions each week. Also, the district reading specialists that have been funded in the past through the Advancement Initiative have proven to really support our young readers in K to, grades K to two. The FOS curriculum funded through the Advancement Initiative in grades two to five, you'll see later in our budget presentation, we're looking to bolster that in the younger grades, but it's made a huge difference in the science learning for our students. And as well, the Beyond the Bell programming that we use for some of those, that initiative that Elaine talked about for the science with the fifth graders. We're fine-tuning it, but we really appreciate all of the support you've given us so far. So our current action steps, we organized it to break it down by each goal so that it would pertain and remain goal-oriented in our work. The first, looking at high academic achievement. As I said before, the common planning structure has already shown great benefits to our, our grade teams, meeting weekly and being able to collaborate in that way. Investigation of new assessments that correlate to state assessments. Again, we're noticing that our internal data does not reflect or predict or give us a better sense. We're looking to get a better sense of our students in that way. We're doing some internal analysis of our curriculum assessments and instruction, and that is part of our, our goal in reaching high academic achievement for all students. Opportunities to engage students in authentic use of technology. So across the content areas, again, to help students have the skill base when they do take these high-stakes tests, sometimes it's not the content, it's the actual practice of technology. We're currently implementing extended-day programs, some that are new and some that are in their third or fourth year. Saturday Academy for third-grade students, we have over 50% of the grade enrolled, and it's off to a great start. A grade four book club that will have an extension into a Saturday at the close of that club. Grade five science Saturdays, which have not started yet, but are in the implementation and planning phases. And Tucker mentoring for grades four and five students. So at-risk students that have been identified for a variety of reasons are paired with a staff member to provide support in a variety of ways. So moving on to goal two, looking at increasing achievement in reading on both internal and external assessments. The full-time district reading specialist works with our, our students daily tirelessly to make sure that they're making gains they need to early on. We analyzed and reassigned the Title I staff, so the supplemental staff we get from the Title I grant, to work with students in grades two through five to really support the students and maximize impact in the testing grades. Goal three for community of respect, collaboration, and achievement. The second step curriculum, which was a district-wide implementation, teachers are loving it. They are implementing it at a, at 100% rate. Students are using the, the language. We're using it in our morning announcements. It's a community-wide implementation of that curriculum. It's going really well. Our social work, social work intern, as Elaine discussed, from Boston University, is working with students during some of the times during lunch and recess when social situations may arise that are challenging, and is a presence at Tucker two days a week. Our 1647 home visit initiative, we have the training, that's also district-wide. It's proving to really help with that homeschool connection for families. And a new program that was implemented just this year was the Tucker Family Mentoring Program, where families that are new to the school community, or new to the district, or just are starting here with their children, are paired with an experienced volunteer mentor family, and they connect a few times before the school year begins and then come to events and connect, and it's really proven to be a great resource for everyone.
In fact, a few of our new teachers told us they felt over, I mean, the families are over-supported. You're like, oh, everyone keeps offering help. So that's a good problem to have. So on to our budget request. So personnel, and again, I think these mirror some of what you've heard, so we'll kind of just go through reading them, and then we can answer any additional questions. As I was saying, similar to what you've heard from the other elementary schools, but a full-time assistant principal, we think this would help us reach all of our goals. Point five adjustment counselor, again, I think having the intern this year has really shown us that that's a gap in having an other person that's not necessarily doing the mandated work, but helping with those unstructured times, helping with the second step rollout, even working with our lunch and recess aides. So I think that's definitely would be helpful to have another position. Point five grade four co-taught teacher, bridge that gap for students in the co-taught programs. Point five instructional technology teacher that's content-focused. So really thinking particularly in the upper grades, how we can maximize having the instructional technology teacher as it stands now. They're, she's every other week in our buildings. For Tucker, that looks like we have her two days a week, every two weeks, which is not a lot of time to get in all of the classes. So thinking about that position, maybe being able to be split K two and three, five, so that we can get more time, particularly in the upper grades. 1.0 preschool coordinator, I'm sure Holly will add to this as well, but our preschool programs have really grown. I think we've done a good job in trying to norm the curriculum, norm the expectations. That's really developed a lot over the last two years, but I think it would be really helpful to have somebody between all three schools with preschool to support. And then a 1.5 instructional aides in grades one and two. Again, looking ahead, thinking about how we want to close the achievement gap. We start to see it appear in grade three, and we think that where we are reaching capacity, as I know most of the schools are, having that second body to cut the student-to-teacher ratio may really support in, you know, group work, guided reading, so a consideration there.
So like the personnel requests, our curriculum requests are in line with the district initiatives and across the four schools. K in one science FOS kits, so FOS is the curriculum, as I'm sure you're familiar with, for grades two to five, that we've seen implemented exceptionally well by the teaching staff. And having the K in one curriculum would help to strengthen the early childhood access to strong science curriculum. With the new rollout of the standards by the state, this would really, this aligns very well, perfectly even with them. So that would be a, a, a goal for goal one. ELA curriculum materials, so as Assistant Superintendent Sheehan was discussing, our PD yesterday was spent all day looking at the standards-based reporting, and we've been doing a lot of work with that over the last year or two. And as we dig into aligning the benchmarks, the standards with evidence that students are able to do, we're finding that there are some places in our ELA curriculum that we may need to provide some additional curriculum resources to ensure that we're, we're hitting all the targeted areas. And so that would be a district consistent ask as well, and would address goals one and two.
So our technology requests, which are pretty simple, it's, we could always use additional learning materials to help with goals one and two, to really help kids improve their, you know, practicing and ability across the entire curriculum. Technology purchases and replacements. We've talked about a color printer to help teachers really be able to quickly provide learning materials when sometimes it's inaccessible during the school day. Replacements for things that break so that every child has access during the school day to the technology that he or she needs. And then extended day, we started brainstorming about this as a school site council and got really excited because the possibilities for both building up the community and also providing enrichment academic and, and through the arts and sports are just, are so amazing. So I would divide them, I think, into, into three subcategories. One is sports and arts and equity, so making sure that Tucker students are able to participate in sports programs that are, you know, sponsored by the town, arts programs that might be outside of the school. So whether that's creating just more information for, for parents and families, maybe transportation assistance to help get the kids who lack the transportation over to those opportunities. So we'd love to look into that. Extended learning, I think last time we were here, we talked to you about our Saturday Academy, which at, what, 8:30 in the morning on Saturdays is the hottest place to be for third graders at Tucker. They all want to come. It's an incredible vibrant program. The idea of expanding that to more grades or being able to do more within those programs, you know, it's a really, it's, it's, it's academic enrichment that they don't even realize is academic enrichment because it's so much fun. And we've talked about other ways that we could do that, extended learning, whether it's supplemental science in conjunction with the science fair, or finding ways to bridge those, those learning gaps during breaks, during vacations and summer breaks, and try to get the kids together and be social and learn during those periods. And then before and after school, Tucker has a really robust program for both. My kids have gone through the after school forever. My son, who's in second grade, last year asked if he could stay longer for after school. I was like, sure, why not? But it's, you know, it's a really great program with a dedicated staff, and it's always underfunded. And so in order, there are so many different enrichment possibilities, again, arts, games, science-related, that we could always use, you know, assistance, bringing in programming that could, that could help the kids, and also maybe bringing in some academic resources to help kids with their homework and with their academic goals during that time. to help kids with their homework and with their academic goals during that time.
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
Thank you, that was excellent. I had two questions. Okay, so under your current action steps, you said something that, I didn't quite know what you meant, but I didn't want to interrupt you. You said something about the internal assessments didn't quite match up with something, I didn't know what you meant by that.
Yes, and I did kind of go quickly through that because I think we've discussed data a lot. So some of our internal assessments for reading in particular are not, we're finding that we do really well on them. Sort of in grades three to five specifically. And then we see, as you've seen, that our state assessment data does not reflect that same strength. And so as a district and as a curriculum team, we're really looking into why that is. We need maybe a better assessment that reflects the demands that Parker and Cass require. And so that's something we're really taking to heart and making sure that we're adequately assessing so that we're adequately instructing all the students.
And then I had one other question. You talked about the extended day programs, I was glad to hear you say that the Saturday program kids wanted to go. Are they all by invitation only or kids identified?
So this is a program where we, it's special in the way that we invite all third graders. So from all three strands, our co-taught, our regular ed, and our French immersion. And we, at first, we were thinking, should we target, you know, a specific subgroup of students? Is there a way we can use this as a way to get an edge over our achievement gap? And we've recognized that by inviting all students there. A lot of the students in the French immersion program haven't been sort of mixed with the other students in two or three years. And so to see them working together and really being role models for one another in various ways, we're finding that it has strengthened the program. So it's, a big piece of its strength is that it's open to everyone and...
And I didn't just mean the Saturday program, but that was one example. Are the other ones designated or?
So Saturday Academy is open to all students. The grade four book club, the Saturday component is open to all students. Grade five science, to be honest, we're just in the beginning stages, we haven't quite determined that. And then the Tucker mentoring is invite-only for fourth and fifth graders that are, we are concerned about their academic progress.
And it's fine however you do it, and I wouldn't question that. I just always, you know, as a school social worker, want it where it's not typecast.
And the families ask that too, like, wait a minute, you want them to come on a Saturday? Why? But it's really, it's great, and no matter what level they are starting at, they're able to grow. And I think even though that's not our end goal, as Cass is saying, the social piece is really amazing. Where we are a three-strand school, it's really hard, I think, for our French immersion students to be just together, first grade all the way up to fifth grade. And I think for the families that have great relationships in kindergarten and then maybe don't see each other for a very long year. So we really found after Saturday Academy, it's like also the hotspot. They all stay and they all play on the playground and it's a really good community-building time as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Varela?
Thank you, as well as great presentation. I just have two questions on the budget requests. I know that we've asked, we ask this all the time, but just one confirmation that, oh, wait, I'm sorry. Yeah, they are prioritized, okay, that's good. I was gonna say, they're prioritized, right, but I see it on parentheses. And then, two questions, one on the personnel and one on the curriculum. So can you explain with the instructional technology, you put down the point five? That, so that would be in addition, you have Sarah Doherty that comes with and she goes through all four schools, right? Can you explain a little bit about what she does and what specifically, it says, I know it says content focus, but just to give me a little idea of what she does and needing, hearing the need for more instructional technology, where, you know, what would the addition be, like where the emphasis would be?
Yeah, I mean, I think the main focus is around the technology skills. So in particular, in the younger grades, they're learning to type. We have typing without tears. And then as they grow, in writing without tears, typing without tears. Yeah, then as they grow, they're learning skills with PowerPoint, they're learning how to manipulate, which are all very important skills, particularly for the next generation assessments, right? They have to be able to drag and drop, they have to be able to highlight. And they have to be able to type, that's how they're going to respond. I think what we, what we're thinking here is also thinking of how we can work with the teachers more in the classroom, to take the content that they're working on and just create more opportunities for authentic experiences, whether it's through the Study Island platform, in creating reports in the classroom, things that take a lot more time, you know. So they're seeing Ms. Doherty thirty to forty-five minutes every other week. And so they're able to start projects. But I think to really have somebody that that's their strong background to collaborate with the teachers. We do get that, but to make it work timewise, it's tricky. So we've tried a few different models. We've tried kind of working with a few grade levels at a time to have more, more time with them and working on specific projects. We've had, you know, kindergartners recording audio for their stories and things like that. But I think just overall, we just don't have enough time. And when I think about the third, fourth, and fifth graders in particular and the achievement gap, I think if we had more support around the instruction and how that looks in terms of the technology, that would be supportive.
And this is a follow-up, do you think that, and I know that next year, actually, maybe it's this year, I keep on saying next year, but moving from Park to MCAS two point O. But in general, since a lot of the assessment, whatever form of standardized assessment testing, they'll be taking, more and more of it will be digital and they need to be savvier and more comfortable with the technology in order to perform better. I mean, that might be, are you seeing that that's a piece of it as well?
Yeah, absolutely. I think probably the biggest gap we're seeing right now is somewhat around the typing and stamina. You know, we know what they can write, we know what they're capable of. But when it comes time to produce, we're seeing, instead of the lovely passage we know that they can write, they're writing a sentence or two. So I think building up stamina, using technology, just getting that comfort level. And I think the teachers do a really good job of it. But again, I just think somebody with that expertise, more time to collaborate would be really helpful.
Thanks, and then I just had one question on the K one FOS kits, the science. So what, I know this is probably district, and what are you guys teaching now for K one, science?
So, and correct me if I'm wrong, because this was before my, I mean, I know, they're sort of piecemeal units. So they're not aligned with the standards that are currently, have been adopted by Massachusetts. So they're units of study around topics and the materials are not included with that. Same sort of packet of lessons from probably at least eight years. So we're finding that as they get into, we're implementing grade two this year. And it's such a robust curriculum that really provides so much hands-on science and materials that we find that the need is for it to happen right at the beginning, especially now that we have standards in the science content area.
And this particular curriculum better aligns with the Massachusetts?
Yeah, so it's completely aligned. And then our fabulous science coordinator, Bernard Upeller, works to ensure that the assessments are both aligned to the curriculum, which they are because they're produced by FOS, but then are developmentally appropriate in their demands. Because I think it's very demanding, the assessments they include, which is great, but we need to build up to that. So she works with the teachers to alter them. But it's the same, FOS is the same company that we get our two to five curriculum from.
Okay, thank you very much.
Dr. Craig Hitt and then Dr. Donahue.
I just had one quick question because Ms. Bagley-Jones and Ms. Varela are getting some of my questions. And it's just a brief one. You talked about the mentoring program, which I'm quite interested in. You said that at-risk students in grades four and five are paired with staff. Can you just explain a little bit more how that works out?
So this is one of our programs funded through our Title I budget, the grant that we are seeing. So this started two years ago. And what we're finding, and I think what most schools find, is that students that aren't achieving, often it's not due to one particular variable. And we know that we have to look at the whole student when assessing reasons for maybe a lack of growth or a lack of achievement. And so what Elaine, Elaine and I were doing was we would look at that, there's a, there's a set of criteria that the state uses to analyze risk of students. And, you know, we knew who these students were. But we compiled a list of grade four and five because we found that was sort of the critical, those critical years where some of the social problems would arise and students would have more difficulty in class. And we solicited for staff who were interested in sort of piloting this idea, and it's really taken off. So we have a lot of staff, particularly in the upper grades, that want to be that contact for students. So it could mean communicating with home about deadlines for paperwork. It could be ensuring that they have the right connections to resources that maybe aren't easily accessible. Helping them with book reports or projects or homework that's due coming up. Helping them to plan out, like, you're gonna have a really busy night on Wednesday, so what do we need to do Monday and Tuesday in order to make sure you get your homework done?
They also set goals at the beginning of the year, so students are setting goals, and they're also going towards.
Great, thank you.
I was just hoping that you could elaborate on your current co-taught strand staff and what the additional point five would bring you to.
So we have co-taught grades three, four, and five. The model in the district is it can start as early as kindergarten, so I know at Glover, they're K to five. So K through three, it's the general ed teacher and the special education teacher full-time in the classroom. At grades four and five, it's a halftime special education teacher. So while we don't necessarily, you know, in a blue sky, they would have that support all the way through. We know when they go to sixth grade, that support drops back. And so we want to do a little bit more of a gradual release. But we do find, fourth grade in particular, we're looking for that big burst of progress from third to fourth grade and we first assess them, that it would be really supportive to have that special educator an additional year.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
To follow up on that. So you have a single strand of French, you have the co-taught, and do you have a third?
Just a, it's just a stem, yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay, that's what I thought.
I mean, the co-taught is also the stem, so.
Right, right.
Two going.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought, but it was true, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So then just to go back to the co-taught model, in the fifth grade, it's half a day?
Yes.
And you find that that model sort of provides for, you need a little more support in the fourth grade and then the fifth grade, a slow release as they move up to sixth grade?
Yeah, I think we, I think we find by fifth grade, because in all of the schools, we're doing more mixing between all of the classrooms. It's set up in a way where we tend to have our specialists either like more in the morning or more in the afternoon. So that halftime position works better because they can still get to all those content areas in that chunk.
Yep, that makes sense, thank you, yeah.
So I would add my thanks, and these presentations have been really helpful. And it's perfect timing because we're talking about budget priorities. Actually, I had a question, I had the same question Ms. Bagley-Jones asked about the internal assessments. And so the only follow-on I have is, is this issue of internal assessments not being an accurate predictor of performance? Is that an issue that we're finding across the four elementary schools or is that a problem that's unique to Tucker?
I would say yes, across the four schools. I think particularly the third grade data in the schools this year, I think we're all looking closely at the performance of our students. And that's why in particular, we're really thinking about our fourth graders that were our third graders last year. I think that was also the group that benefited the most from the reading specialists that have been put in place. So we were seeing them have a higher level of reading on grade level going into Park than previous years. And we just didn't see that performance. Again, new test, test is changing. There's a lot of variable, so it's not necessarily the curriculum alone. But I think we really want to take this opportunity now that we've had, it's in place for a few years. We've had the reading specialists to really dig in a little bit more as a district and be sure that we know where the gap is.
So a question for the principals and probably Assistant Superintendent Sheehan, how are we troubleshooting this problem?
I don't know if you want to speak to Lectio, Janet?
So we know that we, first, we know that we need to have additional assessments. So we feel that multiple measures might be more predictive. There are some assessments that we're looking at. We're also in the process of doing a curriculum analysis of the impact on students of our current ELA curriculum. And we recognize that there are some gaps in this curriculum program. We had a team of administrators who recently attended what's known as the Lectio Institute. And we had the opportunity to work with Harvard researcher Noni LaSalle. And we went through a very intensive exercise over three days, looking at our programs and analyzing, again, student impact. And we have more work to do in determining whether or not we enhance our current curriculum, supporting the phonics and the vocabulary components, supporting teachers with more professional development in small group instruction. Or do we look at a core curriculum that would include a comprehensive plan that would integrate all components of a balanced literacy program? So we're looking at that now and we have to do a cost analysis around that. And I know that that's something that we'd like some answers to very, very soon, given the budget planning, budget development. But it's a process and we are looking to consult further with Noni LaSalle and her, and her partner because we do really feel that we need some guidance and some work on this. So we began our assessment program a few years ago using the Fountas and Pennell assessment in the primary grades. And in the intermediate grades, we used the Scholastic Reading Inventory. And we switched to using the Fountas and Pennell across all grades in the elementary. What's an interesting piece of data that we have just discovered is that the Pierce Middle School, they are seeing a link between the Scholastic Reading Inventory and the M Castle Park. So there, that does seem to be a predictive assessment. We're not sure about, we haven't used it long enough in the elementary grades to determine whether or not we should bring that assessment back. What we do know is that one assessment is not enough. This assessment helps us, it helps inform our instruction, but we do need some more predictive measures and we need to be able to assess in other areas, like vocabulary and language development and our phonics. That needs to happen.
That was a great answer. Let me finish my questions. And in technology, could you, could you offer a little more specificity about both what you're looking for there and approximately what you think the cost would be?
I would actually say relatively low, probably under five thousand. We have used the Title I budget the last few years to get some additional apps and subscriptions to things like Storyworks. The district has had Study Island. And so I think we're just looking to, as we've had to, we've had to cut to the Title I budget, want to maintain a few of those purchases. So looking to maintain those and then the technology ones were relatively, relatively small. I think it's just more printers, helping, you know, thinking about those PowerPoints presentations and things. You know, there's, we have, I think, we have two main printers for all of our teachers. So, you know, just there asking, it would be really helpful for them to be able to have quicker access in the classroom. Kids can see their work, they can edit it, and just make that turn around a little bit faster, a little bit easier.
Great, Ms. Verilla.
So I, I just wanted to, to follow up to Assistant Superintendent Sheehan's, thank you for that wonderful detail, as Mr. Walker said. But I, right when you spoke about the internal assessments that you're using, I mean, and I work in educational publishing, so I just, I just want clarity that, you know, I know that when you create product and you know that so many students are going to take, say, the park, which is more the overall common core. You know, it's all about practice and, you know, your, your drills, the drill set that you're doing. And I do, I do wanna query that, you know, when it's ever-changing, when it's, it's, you know, it was MCAS and then it's Park and then now it's MCAS 2.0. And, I mean, curriculum's expensive, it's very expensive to purchase and you figure, okay, I'm gonna invest in this for a good chunk of time. And then, and then you're doing, so you, you have your, you still have your, is your common reading core program that old McGraw-Hill, what, what is it?
No, it used to be the Open Court.
Open Court, right.
We, we have Reader's Workshop right now.
So you use that for, you use Reader's Workshop for everything?
Well, Reader's Workshop should be part of a, a literacy program.
Right.
But we have, over the last few years, have had professional development and we've worked with a consultant. And the focus on Reader's Workshop has been very much on the mini lesson. And we have not had the focus that we need on small group instruction. And we also are finding that we're lacking in vocabulary and language development. So there are other components to the ELA block that we need to look at.
So, so you, so you're saying that if you, you think that if you, like you just stated, bring in better every, you know, I wanna say better, but more aligned curriculum that's going to, you know, you always hate to say, well, this curriculum's gonna help us just test better. But, but at the end of the day, like, you know, if you're more familiar with it and you do it and you do it and you do it and then you take a test, that, that is going to feel familiar to what you're doing and what you're practicing in class and what kind of skillset that you're being asked to do, so that when you go and take this big bad standardized test online, it's not gonna be such a foreign concept to them. Is, I mean, you know what I mean? Like, I mean, you know how you, you do something and then you go and you take it and if it's just something that you never, it's not part of your everyday curriculum, I just, it's interesting to me how students could do, you know, even halfway decent on it sometimes, I don't know.
The, the, the overarching goal is that if we, if we have a curriculum that is aligned with the standards, then our students should be able to perform.
Right.
On these high stakes tests.
Right.
And the thing is that now we're incorporating technology, which is, is another layer. So we, we do have to do a curriculum review every so many years and make sure that, because the testing doesn't just tell us about our instructional practices, it also tells us about our curriculum.
Yeah.
We have to look at that.
Okay.
So, so that's what we're doing, but when we look at, you know, the end goal isn't necessarily just the MCAS at Park because, because teachers need to have assessments that are ongoing so that they know how to plan instruction and individualize the students. So you need multiple measures.
Multiple measures, yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
And at this time, we would like to call up the Collicott School Site Council.
Hello, good evening. I am, I am Margot Tans, Collicott Schools Community Representative. Thank you so much for having us here tonight to present Collicott Schools Site Council Budget Presentation. Here tonight with us on the Site Council are our fabulous principal, Collicott Cannon, as well as two fantastic teachers, Xena Hamada, second grade teacher, and Laura, sorry, Laura McDermott, third grade teacher, as well as our parent representative, Gretchen Duffy. Gretchen has two children at Collicott, one in third grade and one in fifth, and one is in French and one is in English. And also on our council, we have Amy Gale, Fatima Boris, grade first, first grade teacher, Ellen Lohian, fifth grade teacher, Maureen Driscoll, a parent, as well as Heidi Vaughn, a parent. Thank you so much.
Our mission statement for Collicott School is as follows. At the Collicott School, there is a commitment to academic excellence and high standards for administrators, teachers, and students. The dedicated and creative Collicott teachers and staff are committed to maximizing the individual potential of each child. Through a wide variety of challenging activities and experiences, we strive to provide a strong academic foundation and a love for learning in a secure, safe, and stimulating environment that values individual differences.
Thank you. So who are we? We are the Collicott Cardinals. I wanna take some time to slow it down and really tell you about Collicott. You have heard of our data, you have heard about our connection with Cunningham School, and you've heard about all of the things we're working towards as a district. But one of my favorite days last year was giving Elaine Craighead a tour of our school when you first joined us on the school committee. And I realized at, at that moment that it had all come, come together for me as a principal. It was a lot to take on. The Collicott School is a very unique and special and large place. So I really wanna tell you about the special programs that we have. Like Tucker, we have a preschool program. We currently hold an integrated preschool classroom. When I started a few years ago as a curriculum coordinator, there were four half-day sessions. We are currently at six half-day sessions and all of our peer seats are full. And we have a few more spots available for students with special needs who will come as the year goes along. So again, right now, we have seventy-five children, we know at least three more will start before the end of December. And so again, that's, that, in last year, between January and the end of the year, we had about fifteen children enter the preschool. And the way that happens is when a child turns three early and graduates from early intervention, then they join us at the integrated preschool. So we do only expect this number to grow, and it is of concern to be able to be available and ready for them. So again, we are at seventy-five children right now, and that's just at our integrated half-day sessions. We also currently hold a full-day preschool for children with more intensive special needs. So these are children who may need special education support that goes beyond the hours of a half-day session. So this year, we currently have one classroom and it houses nine students. So these students, again, the goal is to include them as much as possible, and they are included in the integrate set, integrated setting whenever possible. And we're noticing all children are different, and it may be in the beginning of the year that they're not included at all. In the middle of the year, they may be there half a day, and, and the goal is to include them as much as possible. So right now, we have nine students in our full-day program, receiving pretty intense special education services. We also at Collicott house the NECC and Partner Classroom. So NECC stands for the New England Center for Children. It is a world famous program, and this is where some of the best practices are born in regard to supporting children with significant autism. Years ago, our children who needed intensive services because of an ASD diagnosis would be sent to NECC in Southborough, quite a long ride. It is my pleasure and honor to now be able to host all of these students who live in Milton, a spot in our school. So we started with one NECC program with a NECC teacher, and we still hold that class right now, and we have third, fourth, and fifth graders in that class. And with the support of NECC staff and training, we have been able to add Partner Classes, which means that we have Milton teachers teaching these classes, but we still receive additional support and training from the New England Center. That means we have children from the New England Center coming in as consultants to the teachers, but also to the families. They do family clinics, they host families monthly within the school, they do home visits, we work with BCBAs, home health aides, we have, it's quite an encompassing program. So the fact that it's growing is really good news. We are able to take care of Milton children in Milton, so it's, it's pretty amazing. We have fifteen students who are in the NECC or Partner Program right now. We have three classrooms. I'm not done. So the elementary classes, as you've heard from the other schools, and it's also my pleasure to go last because I've enjoyed watching the other schools present, and we are so on the same page and aligned with everything that we're asking for, but I did wanna highlight what makes us a little bit different. But our elementary classes are very much like what you've heard about, except that we have thirty of them. So currently, we have six hundred twenty-five elementary students. So those are students just from kindergarten through grade five. So in kindergarten, we have five classes, in first grade, we have four classes, in second grade, we have five classes, in third, fourth, and fifth, we have four classrooms. We are built to have four of everything, and I can't have five kindergarten classes until our second graders graduate because we are truly out of space. So again, when you see that six hundred twenty-five, might sound like a lot to you, but again, that's only our kindergarten through grade five. On this chart, which is coming up, you'll, on the screen, I apologize, but I think it's in black, in print, you'll see that we have a total of eighty-four preschool children housed in four classrooms. So that's four classrooms of preschool children. One hundred twelve kindergarten students in five classrooms. In grades one through five, we have four hundred ninety-five children in twenty-five classrooms. The Partners in NECC, as you heard, fifteen students in three classrooms. We also have children who come strictly for services. Right now, we have four children who drop in maybe for speech or physical therapy or occupational therapy, who just come in for those services and leave. That number will only grow again as our relationship with early intervention and as children turn three, that number will grow. So our total number is actually seven hundred thirteen students, seven hundred thirteen students in thirty-seven classrooms. Those are the Collicott Cardinals.
Hi, I'm Gretchen Duffy, and I'm the parent representative for this Collicott School Site Council, and just wanna thank you for your support of the school and for also supporting and appreciating the role of parents and community members in this Site Council. I had the pleasure last year of presenting the school improvement plan here in the spring, and some of our goals were to improve science, improve literacy, and to support and develop the whole child. You'll see in the upcoming slides that we feel really strongly about aligning our staffing goals with our improvement goals, and we can elaborate that a little bit more.
Sure, so some of this may seem very familiar to you, but I'm gonna go and, and share with what I think would be great additional staffing positions for the Collicott. And they are prioritized. Number one would be the increase of a coordinator for English, Language Arts, and Mathematics. As you know, Amy Gale works both for Cunningham and Collicott. She services twelve hundred children, thirty-seven classrooms at Collicott, and additionally, all the classrooms at Cunningham. The work that she is expected to, to deliver is very different than a halftime curriculum coordinator at Tucker or at Glover. In addition, she is a full-time employee and she is more than capable, so her reward for her good work is that she's often called upon to do even more good work. So her roles and responsibility, because she is extremely talented, go far beyond the role of an ELA and math curriculum coordinator. And the need for a position like that is very important to me. I feel as though if we had a full-time curriculum coordinator dedicated only to Collicott, teachers would receive more support, in turn, children would make greater growth. Amy has great skills and talent in both areas and has done great work in many grades. And of course, we would love to have her full-time, but we, we need somebody full-time. And so that is, is extremely important to me. The second request is an assistant principal, full-time. Again, this would support all of the goals that you just heard Ms. Duffy talk about. And the rationale would be that a certified administrator would help me, and, you know, one of my concerns about asking for this is it feels almost like I'm, I'm giving up on things. I'm not giving up on things, I don't wanna give up any responsibilities, but what I do want is to be able to be in classrooms more. I want to give more thoughtful and reflective feedback on evaluations. I want more time to write those evaluations and to observe before I write those evaluations. The busy work that takes place between eight and eight forty-five, when you have seven hundred thirteen children and ninety-nine staff members, that includes sick calls, personal calls, flat tire, can't get to work on time, my dog ate my homework, I hear it all, and it's time-consuming. So the management piece there is taking up the time that I could be supporting teachers or children or families. And I think one of the very special things about Collicott is that even though we are a large community, we know everyone, and we really truly try to connect with the family, and that includes the administrative assistant. Joanne Barker knows these children like the teachers do, and she knows the social and emotional needs of children. Having an additional person to support the busyness of, of the main office in the morning, and also the management of staff would allow me or the other person to support the children, families, and teachers more.
Hey, so I'm gonna continue with the, the needs of staffing, staffing needs, and the third need we would have is a math specialist, that would be a great addition to our staff. The rationale behind it is that, as documented with the reading specialist, how much improvement we've seen with the support of a reading specialist, it would be totally the same with a math specialist, and that would align with our goal two and three. What a math specialist would do is help facilitate intervention enrichment in classrooms, also modeling to the teaching staff. They would do push-ins, they would help a teacher, small groups, it would really lead to more success, and things can only get better with, with a math specialist. Another need would be a technology specialist, and I know we've addressed this with the Tucker School, but at the same time, the technology specialist is a coach. They help teachers with also writing all this new technology. And I mean, we talked about Sarah Doherty, and she's really spread very thin between all four schools. She tries to push into every classroom, but, I mean, how many times can we see her if she's among everybody? Last week in my classroom, she, we did math number stories on an iPad, where the children were adding numbers, creating the story, and then putting their voices in it. I mean, it was really great. So adding someone to do that would help us see her more. The additional adjustment counselor, also the rationale behind it would be for the adjustment counselor to be more available because ours covers the preschool as well, and there's a lot going on there, as well as lower elementary. We still see a lot of children coming in, you know, who need an adjustment counselor to be able to start their day the way they should, so.
We were also going to look at the health program, and Mrs. Jean Scroyer, who does an amazing job at the Collicott School, but she is servicing over seven hundred children on a daily basis, including children from the NECC program, and some of these children have pretty significant documented medical conditions. And that's in addition to really maintaining a lot of the day-to-day things for, for children. She's not just putting Band-Aids on and calling for fevers, she's managing the hearing, hearing and vision screenings. She's, you know, last week, she actually called me personally to check on my daughter's asthma plan and see if there's been any changes. And it really made me stop and think about how important that role is, and if she's servicing seven- And if she's servicing seven hundred children, I'm not sure she'd be able to check every child's asthma plan. So I think that support would be certainly helpful for her to have an assistant, maybe not a nurse, but even somebody that could assist her in the office for those everyday needs. Kind of what Holly said, with some assistance in the office and helping Ms. Barker, just maintaining scheduling needs for the programs, covering emergencies. You know, with the security levels that are so important to our schools now, it would certainly be beneficial assistance to her. And the eighth staffing need we were looking for is an additional lunch aide to supervise this large population of kids in the cafeteria. Currently, we have two staff in the cafeteria and two on the playground, and it's a lot of children. And for example, there's a hundred and twelve second graders at lunch, and if there's two aides for a hundred and twelve second graders, opening milks and helping with spilled things, making sure kids have their lunch, you know, an additional aide would certainly help support that.
So, Collicott School needs materials. We're going to start with the science materials for kindergarten and first grade, we spoke about that again. So I start FOS Science in second grade with my students. When they come from first grade and kindergarten before that, they hadn't done FOS, so they had another curriculum to follow. So they start FOS in second grade. It would be nice to purchase it for kindergarten and first grade. And the second thing is the materials to support literacy instruction. Definitely additional phonics material needed to support primary language literacy development. Also increasing the number of nonfiction texts aligned with the units of study that we have to teach in reading, writing, and science. Social studies will bolster both content and literacy instruction. And also, technology, replace four smart boards. Those smart boards have been purchased before 2012, they're in need of being replaced. And also, the Chromebooks that were purchased in 2012, would be nice to have the HP Chromebooks to, just to go with the flow of technology.
And also, I, I just want to point out, I was being very patient over there waiting the assessment questions that you are asking about, the internal assessments. First, a PARC or MCAS type of experience. I think it's important to note that the internal assessments that we were talking about tonight are an assessment delivered by a teacher to a student. It's one-on-one. It's a teacher working with the child, listening with the child, questioning, and probing for comprehension. And then, when it comes time to take a standardized test, like the MCAS or PARC, which, and the MCAS this year will be on computer, I think it's safe to say any of our children right now will not take paper and pencil tests, ever. In fact, it would be a special ed accommodation to use a pencil. So I think it's clear to say, it's, you know, when we talk about typing and the need for technology, that, that is not a nice to have anymore, it's a necessity. So I did want to just point out, the assessments are very different. And the Fautis and Penal assessments that we're talking about do give us some really good information as Assistant Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Shan shared. It gives us great next steps, but it does, it's a much different type of assessment. Our third graders, when they go to take the first standardized test, it's a very different experience than, than what we're talking about. I also want to point out that we, we focus on third grade a lot, but if you watch those third graders as they grow with experience, with technology experience, with content experience, the, the gap does close. So what will success look like at Collicott? I shared a little bit, not too long ago, very late at night, in a cold room, just like this with you, what some of our very, some of the highlights of our data, but I believe with these improvements, success will look like subgroup achievement gap continuing to close. It's important to note that the CPI achievement gap for our grade four students with disabilities decreased last year from thirty-one to eleven and nine tenths.
Is that a typo? Thirty-one to eleven point nine?
That's a period.
Not a period.
No, I'm, I'm just being shot.
So we, it's huge, it is huge. And again, I want to point out that those third graders who take that assessment for the first time now have a year of experience, they have another year with a technology specialist, they have another year of technology centers. It's a lot, we ask a lot of our little people, and they can achieve, and I think with increased experiences at younger ages, they can do well. Our children can do this, we just need to give them opportunities to practice. And I think the technology specialist could also give that type of practice. When we talk about typing, typing, again, might have been considered a nice to have at one point, but children have to be able to type at a very quick rate to be able to get their thoughts down. So in first and second and third grade, when a child comes home with keyboarding homework, that is a necessity. It's not a nice to have. Exactly, my child in Mark McDermott's classroom came home two nights in a row for keyboarding without tears, and it was a practice that he really enjoyed and couldn't wait to do. So it's not, I want to be very clear that we're not, I'm not encouraging a child to be in front of the screen too much. But the physical practice of the typing is a skill that will result in greater test scores. Also, science scores will continue to rise. We saw a five percent increase in numbers of students in the advanced category. I'd like to see that increase, and I believe with increased focus on science at an earlier age, it will become much a way of life for children. And I see it happening already, I think, you know, now is the perfect time to recognize the good work that Bernadette Butler has been doing. She has made such a significant increase in the excitement and joy of science. You know, from the curriculum that she's already helped us invest, the, the hopes and dreams she has of the future investments, experiences like Camp Invention that was hosted at Tucker School this year, the Science Saturdays that she's helping to plan. All of those result in children who think like scientists, and mathematicians, and explorers. And again, I speak from experience, my children are at Collicott, and, you know, I have a second grade daughter who talks about being able to build and explore, and make mistakes, and fix it, and learn from it. And so I'm watching, as a principal, but also as a parent, the impact that these types of experiences are having. I also think that the increased support that we're asking for would result in grade-three students specifically. And again, I, I focus on grade-three because there are pioneers, like that's, that's the age. Third grade is when it all comes together and you're tested. And it's, it's really the bridge from, you know, the carefree life of primary grades to what can you do? And how can you show us? So in order to be able to prepare these children, to be able to show us with the increased support that we're asking for, children will be more comfortable, not only with the content, but with the technology. Again, think about what these eight and nine-year-olds are asked to do. They're asked to spit out their thinking like this. When we use our internal assessment, they're able to verbally tell a teacher what they understand. There's a big difference. But with increased technology experiences, and just the everyday use of something like a keyboarding program, they'll be more comfortable with that. And I also think there'll be a consistent model for providing teacher support in all content areas. I think now is also the perfect opportunity to recognize the staff we have at Collicott. If you saw the amount of work that happened yesterday, when all the children were at the playground, or the movies, or whatever they chose to do, the teachers really worked hard yesterday. And not only were they able to really dive into a brand-new standards-based reporting program and feel good about that, but then they, they had a whole afternoon with support to think about how they were able to fit everything in that they need to. And that's a real challenge. I think it's been highlighted through this presentation that we ask a lot of children, and behind all of that is a lot of planning from teachers. So with an increased curriculum coordinator and assistant principal, I feel teachers would be more supported and better prepared to do their jobs. I also think it's important to say, the technology has been a clear theme tonight. It will be intentionally integrated throughout the school day and effectively leveraged for deep learning. In addition to things like devices and experiences, we need more support in making sure that the devices are managed well, and that we are able to get what we need. I heard Dr. Elaine McNeil-Jamai ask for things like money for apps. That is important, the devices are only so useful, so it's something I wish I put on my list. I was trying to keep it short, but everything she asked for, I want that too. And I also think, you know, years ago, as, when I first became a curriculum coordinator, and I worked with Assistant Superintendent John Phelan, and we watched these iPads pop up. And they kept popping up, and we weren't buying them, but people were giving them to us because they were helpful, especially in the special education world. And we were trying not to have them, because it was too much to manage. And then we realized, we have to take control before we lose control. And that's what happened with the whole iPad movement, and now I'm watching that happen with the Kindles specifically. It's such an amazing device, especially for a struggling reader. And so we've, we have, that, it's happening with Kindles, they're popping up, they're coming either through grants or donations. And we don't have an effective way to manage them, because we don't know how to get money on them. And so that's a district problem that we're working towards fixing. And it's not even that it's a lot of money, but it's like the, the tool for getting books on the Kindle is the problem. So it's not necessarily the money, it's, it's another whole issue that Sarah Doherty can't plan because she's enforceable. So also, text, both in class and in the library, will be focused and on content-rich topics. And there will be a consistent multi-tiered approach to supporting social, emotional, and behavioral well-being of all students at the Collicott School. You heard we have a full-time curriculum coordinator who I can't say enough about. She's been instrumental in supporting our new Second Step program. But beyond that, she has the expertise to help children with anxiety get in the door and adjust to school. I have all the faith in the world that she can do it, but she needs a little help. Again, she, she often takes on the role of an assistant principal in a school at large. So we need more time for the adjustment counseling. And finally, Collicott School and families will partner effectively in supporting the whole child. And that's what I think success will look like if given these additional supports. Thank you for this opportunity.
No, go right ahead.
No, no, you, you guys go.
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
Well, the Collicott, I recognize some of the faces and names from when my daughter was there when she was young. And Collicott was a very special and is a very special school. I'm shocked at the size. I'm disappointed to hear about the music and art rooms. Being, not being able to be used all the time for music and art, but to be used for classrooms, because...
Oh, no, that's...
I thought that's what you said.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Music and art are used all day long for music and art. With the increased time, which we're very grateful for, we do have to have music for some of the children on the stage in the cafeteria.
Oh, okay, so it's not the whole thing, oh, okay.
No, so we have Mr. Ragusa, who was an additional hire and doing a great job with our kindergarten and first grade students. For some of his classes, he, the stage is his classroom. And he's made great use of the space, it's actually beautiful for movement and...
And I misunderstood you, so I apologize.
No, but I do, I think that you're bringing up a good issue, so I'll capitalize on that. So we have Ms. Trumbauer working in the art room all day long. And we have Ms. Baylon, who, between Cunningham and Collicott, we've worked out a schedule for our computer labs. So the Cunningham Computer Lab for two days a week is an art room for Ms. Baylon. So now my, the Collicott Computer Lab is shared with the Cunningham. So we share two labs, two of the days we give it to Ms. Baylon so she can have an art space and not have to travel. And the good news is, we have increased art and music.
Tom, you have increased art and music, you have an extra fifteen minutes. Right, and, and again...
But the forty-five minutes...
Oh, I know.
Is for a teacher, and that classroom teachers as well as specialists, they're so grateful for that time. I, you know, April Allegrazza, our music teacher, who's been there for a good amount of time, within the first two weeks of school, couldn't get over how much more she was able to get through, so...
And I do appreciate the fact that it's great, the planning time for teachers, and I do really support that, but also, really, how much music and art from a kid's point of view can you do in thirty minutes? Yeah, so I'm really glad about that, but I just remember the days with my kids at the Collicott where, you know, art was in a closet, and then it was on a card, and then, you know, it was just, it was just horrendous. But anyway, so I just want to make sure that that's kept up front, because that's part of the beautiful schools that we have, are having those dedicated rooms.
I should also comment that the teachers communicate with each other, and we've planned accordingly so that when April Allegrazza's on her lunch, Mr. Ragusa is actually teaching the class in her room. So it's used all day long, I promise.
No, oh, no, 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 you're, I'm glad that you're telling us about it, because I think it's important as we go on with planning, we're clearly running out of space. So it's good to bring that front and center, that's what I was trying to say. The other thing, I just have a couple of things, and then I'll let other people speak, but, you know, I really heard you, Holly, talk about kids with learning challenges from a very special place in your heart. And I really want to acknowledge that and thank you for that, because I don't think that parents and kids with learning challenges always feel that way. And I really think it's important that, that really stands out to me about your presentation. The adjustment counselor, you said, sometimes takes on assistant principal roles, and I guess I would just put out there, and we don't have to discuss it, that that would concern me in this, you're doing the best you can with limited resources. But her or his role is not of a disciplinarian, it's of an adjustment counselor, so it's just something, you know, that I'm glad you brought up, because again, that's a concern, it should be a concern for us.
Dr. Craig.
I remember that day fondly, when I toured the Collicott, and I remember saying to you, "I don't know how you do this," because the school is so large, and there is, there are so many balls you're keeping in the air with all of those different constituencies. So, so this, I get a chance to say publicly, what a great job you're doing. And I, I think, I'm, I'm not sure here, on your staffing needs, you said it was prioritized, but you have two number ones. Is that a way of telling us that, that, that those are tied?
Yes, we need them both.
Oh, okay, or is one one and one A?
They're all number one.
I think it's number two.
Kim and Elizabeth, next one's a three.
Right, yeah, right.
So I, I think I might need to give you an updated version, but I do have number one, the increased curriculum coordinator, and number two, the assistant principal.
Okay, all right, we'll go with that. Okay, I'll, I'll hand it over to somebody else.
I think the new one's coming your way.
Yes, coming your way.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Ms. Everhart.
So, yeah, I'll just say that your seventy-five preschoolers is, you know, if you're...
Eighty-four.
Yeah, so that's a school all in itself if you're outside in a private early childhood facility by itself, with, you know, multiple administrators and staff. So, yeah, that's a lot of kids. I have a question about the preschool coordinator, didn't we used to have a preschool coordinator? What happened, how long have we not had a preschool coordinator?
So we actually still have a preschool coordinator, Emily Nizaro, but I, I do want to be clear about her job. She's actually a school psychologist and a team chair. So her role at the Collicott is a school psychologist, preschool team chair, and I think on paper, she's a point-two preschool coordinator. So she, she works very hard to communicate with Tucker and Milton High School, as does Ada Rose Marin, a wonderful consultant. But the reality of Emily's job is that she's a school psychologist and a team chair. She is, right now, one of the reasons my head is still on straight, and, and she does a lot of work communicating with the other schools. So yes, she has that role, her title is preschool coordinator, and I believe it's point-two.
So, so let me understand, because it was in the Tucker presentation where she asked for the preschool coordinator. She's talking, she said specifically district-wide, is that correct, when Dr., she said that? So the, the person that you're speaking of, in the point-two position that she's in, is that a district-wide thing, or that's just for the Collicott?
She, the point-two is a district position, but her job at Collicott is to be a school psychologist and a team chair. And she works, yes, at the preschool coordinator position as a district position.
But we used to have a full-time.
We, didn't we used to have a full-time preschool coordinator?
It may have been full, full-time, but she did teach. When, when I was at the Collicott, she taught, excuse me, I didn't. But she, she taught for half a day, she had one session, and then was the coordinator for the other half.
So Emily's day today included testing children, hosting team meetings, coordinating special education transportation.
Yeah, okay. I was just, I remember the, I know...
I was just, I remember the pres, I know, I knew the person. And I just think that, since that's an ever-growing population, that, that needs some attention.
When I, when I saw Tucker's present before us, I, I wished that I had that on this presentation as well. Um, I do think if they were an assistant principal at Collicott School, they would take on responsibilities of preschool as well.
Ms. Varela.
Well, I, I also too want to echo from Singh's presentation, um, the early ed, I, I mean, the, the enrollment issue at large. Yeah, I mean, we spoke about it a little bit, um, at these meetings, but again, for people watching, I, you know, I don't think the general population, you know, is maybe fully aware about the numbers and how tight this is getting. And we talk, we, we talk at other various sub, subcommittee meetings that this comes up at. And especially because Collicott houses so those big programs. Um, early ed is, is an issue that we need to be aware of, that the town needs to be aware of, that the enrollment numbers are, they're, they're, it, we've got a very limited amount of time before the beautiful art rooms that Ms. Bagley-Jones doesn't want to lose and all that are going to be a thing of the past. And then how much longer and how much longer. So, um, it, it's something that's on, that we're aware of, and it's something that needs to be, um, investigated and, you know, and handled. So I, it's a, it's a real concern, um, that I'm very worried about. Um, but I, I commend and praise what you're doing under the given circumstances of th- those numbers, uh, for the time being. The other thing I wanted to ask about, which I, I've only seen on yours, but I just think is an issue, always an issue district-wide. And I want to ask it again today. So I know it's way down there on the list, number six, the Health Aid. But you know, I, um, I was a Collicott parent, and, uh, I had two children that went through that school. Both had health issues, so I know both, um, you know, Jeanne Skroy, love her dearly, she's phenomenal. And, um, Allison Joyce, even though they're divided up, it is a nurse's suite there. So, so you're at like seven hundred on the Collicott side, and then how much again on, on the Cunningham?
Uh, there's, there are twelve hundred students in the two buildings.
Right. Um, and, and you don't, and you currently, and do you get a floater there, though? Do you get a floater, like, if you know, say, Jeanne or, um, Allison's gonna have, you know, have to attend a team meeting, a five-to-four plan, uh, you know, IEP plan, who, who covers the office for the other one, if someone needs to be in a meeting, or how, how is that orchestrated?
Um, so, they communicate to the staff when there's a training. For example, this morning, there was a training, and they just ask teachers to be more proactive about taking care of children within the class, so that they could get through a training. Um, and again, Jeanne has been excellent at educating the staff on following the protocol about when to s- to send a child to the nurse. And she's been especially, um, productive with that this year. And so, we do try to keep nurse visits at a minimum, but there are times when they will need to attend a meeting, and one nurse will cover the office. Um, there, I believe, is a position of an additional nurse who, um, is assigned to certain schools at certain times of the year.
And so, can, and I, can I ask, um, Assistant Superintendent Sheen and, um, Dr. Patek? So, I, I specifically, again, thought that this year, that there was an extra floater added to the floaters you already had, that Margaret Gibbons would then assess the need of where that person goes, based on a day that the four lementaries would have. So that's there. So how, so my question to you, how many are there? Are there one, are there two? Like, what is the given circum, what is situation there?
There's, there's a lot of money budgeted for it. We have a series of people who fill in, uh, who are substitute nurses, if you will.
Right.
Who take over, for instance, when there's a, you know, when Nurse Gibbons at the high school has to go give a, a professional development, or bring someone else into the, to cover the high school. And what we did this year was, we increased the budget for that. It's on a day-by-day basis, on a need-by-need basis. There's not, I, you know, a, a point-three person who wanders around and is, is assigned to different hours here and there. But we have additional money in this year's budget for additional hours for those, uh, those substitute and fill-in nurses that we use. We moved it up from, I want to say, we moved it up from fifteen thousand dollars to twenty thousand dollars in this year's budget. So we have, um, and, and those are generally called in by, uh, by Margaret Gibbons, the head nurse, who makes the assignment as, as to who needs extra time, where, and for what purpose. And it's generally built around things like, you know, screenings and things like that. It's not, in addition to the usual substitutes if someone's out, but that's just a different one.
Okay. Um, but, you know, I, I know it's only, I mean, I know it's only a number six, but I, I know as, as a mom of children with, um, health issues, that this is, um, I don't know, it's, it's a bigger, it's, it, we're just curious, it's a bigger issue, because besides all the other stuff of someone just being sick, there are children, there are children mainstreamed in this, in the, all of these schools, which is fabulous, but have very serious, very significant health issues that, you know, that they, that have to be dealt with, where meds have to be administered, you know, daily, all the different stuff that needs to be, that needs to happen. Plus, they have to do the screenings, you know, plus they have to deal with someone who scraped their knee on the playground and came in and, you know, or is running a fever or a hundred-and-three this day. So, again, with the high level of enrollment that's coming up, you know, these, these issues are not going away. I mean, it's just, you see it, you know, I've seen it from millennium on. So, from two thousand on, the auto, like, the autoimmune spectrum of kids, which is the asthma and everything else that falls into that, is, um, and the allergies and type one and all of that, it's only, it's only on the rise. So, um, this is something that, I don't know, and, and I think we're luck, we're lucky that nothing's ever happened, that someone's been in an IEP, you know, an IEP meeting, and then somebody anaphylaxxed, and then someone had a serious injury on the playground, you know, all at once. So, um, I'm glad you put it in, and I do think it's, um, a more serious issue, so.
Not to interrupt, Ms. Varela, but I guess, just like we have an accounting of the teacher subs we use, the nurse subs, it sounds like are available, but they go through Nurse Gibbons. So, we shouldn't be in a situation at the Collicott Cunningham with one nurse for twelve hundred kids. We should be able to have a sub there, correct?
So we always have a nurse if, um, Jeanne is hardly ever out, but when she has an opportunity to attend a professional development, we do have a nurse come in and take her place.
Okay.
Um, but for an IEP meeting, or, or, you know, if it's an hour or a half hour of the day...
If they're in the building, are they?
They're in the bill, if they're in the building.
If they're in the building for it. Okay, but if they're out of the building, we would have a nurse sub.
Yes, I've never felt, um, alone...
Good.
In that sense.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Dr. Donahue.
Excuse me. I wanted, just to make sure that I understand your, um, your point on the science materials correctly. So, those are the science materials for the, the, across the, um, across the strand science curriculum?
Yes.
It's not the specific STEM modules?
No, this would be the FOS materials for both the English Innovation Pathway and the French Immersion Program in Grade One. And in kindergarten, they're all English, so, yes.
Good. And I, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're sort of explicit on that point, but...
And again, I'm following the lead of Bernadette Butler, along with the other principals. I think we all ask for these materials, and watching the impact they're having on the upper grades, it really is amazing. And their built-in assessments give children the types of opportunities that we're talking about here, the online typing type of assessments, where they're asked to analyze a video or fill in a chart on the computer. Those types of experiences come with this kind of curriculum.
Thank you.
Dr. Craig.
Um, I'd just like to point out, this isn't really pertinent to the Collicott, um, but I would just like to point out that it's something that I don't think that we are aware enough of. But if we, um, purchase materials, um, like these FOS materials for kindergarten and Grade One, when they're used in French immersion, they don't come in French. Those teachers have to spend their time translating all of those materials. And that's, um, you know, something that we really need to think about in terms of, um, compensation and other things.
So, I would just like to point out that this is the master translator here of all curriculum materials.
All right.
Um, also with the, the new second step, those materials can be taught in French. There's not a lot that needs to be translated, because it's not a, a lot of written material for the children. The materials that they've provided by way of videos, or photos, or posters are language-neutral. But the science is, is a, is a big investment.
Yeah, and it's, it's also just a time, not necessarily monetary compensation, but it's, it's a time issue, because I know that it can take, uh, a number of months with, into the school year to actually get some of these things translated. So, I just want to point that out. So, on your so-called free time?
They were done during the summer, so that in the fall, or when we started in September, we would be able to start altogether. Um, and that helps in every way, when you have team meetings, when, that we're all on the same page. Yes. So they, yes, they were done during the summer.
The great news is, the teachers get to know the content much quicker.
Assistant Superintendent Sheen.
Thank you, Chairman Walker. I just, I just wanted to make a comment. Um, since the discussion around technology skills and integration of technology were pointed out in both, um, in, in both presentations. Because I, we're seeing increasingly in the, um, educational literature, um, the term blended learning. And so while our goal is for children to be comfortable with our, um, test-taking and so forth, there is also the goal for classrooms to be twenty-first century classrooms. And that would include, um, blended learning, where students are, um, engaging in learning experiences that are, um, not only paper and pencil, but are also, um, technology-integrated. So, um, we do want to see more and more of that in the classrooms. So, that was just something I wanted to point out, because our goal should be a blended learning classroom, and, uh, it's not just for test-taking purposes.
And since you brought that up, it would be a good time to point out that many of our teachers have written grants. And we have a great amount of technology, um, by way of Kindles, iPads, um, listening centers, thanks to the Milton Foundation for Education, as well as, the, Collicott School has an amazing amount of donors to projects funded right now, courtesy of the family, the community, big businesses. So we're working hard at getting as much technology in, so we can have exactly the blended learning environment that you described. So thank you. But managing that is...
She triggered my, I got so distracted by the whole preschool thing, sorry. Um, so you were talking about giving homework for, I love that, what did you call it, typing without tiers? Like the handwriting without tiers program?
So, yes, handwriting without tiers is now keyboarding.
So, you were doing it on an actual keyboard at home?
Why don't I let Laura talk about that?
So the keyboarding without tiers program, it's a, they start it in first grade now. Um, and they, you know, learn where the keys are, and how the finger positions, and all of that. Um, and as the grades continue, it's, they're definitely the, I gave it for homework, um, this week. They are, the goal for third grade is to be able to type fifteen words per minute. Um, so, being familiar with the keyboard and knowing that, you know, instead of the hunt-and-pack method, being familiar with the keyboard is extremely important. And when they're doing it, they are actually on the keyboard and a computer, and it's like J, 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 I, you know, whatever. Moving, moving the fingers in the right spot, and sometimes little games pop up, and can earn little prizes with it.
But it can be on an iPad and iPhone. Yes.
So you're surveying families to know that everyone has access to that at home, before you're giving them the homework?
We do have that information. And, um, we are in a very good spot at Collicott to be able to identify the children who need support at home, and we make accommodations accordingly. We also offer opportunities during the after-school program to go to the computer labs and do that type of work. So I appreciate you asking that question. Um, it's definitely something that we consider. We've identified, um, children who are in need, and we've made accommodations accordingly. Again, most every family in Collicott receives all of our information, um, by way, electronically, and are able to access this at home. The biggest challenge is a family of five or seven. We do have those. And having enough devices to accommodate. But the after-school is a great way to help ease that pressure.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Concanon, and members of the site council, and, uh, we're glad we can get you out of here a little earlier this time. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
So now we have the MASC conference update by Dr. Craig.
So, uh, between November second and fifth, Chairman Walker, Ms. Varela, and I, uh, attended the MASC slash MASs Annual Conference. And what that, what those acronyms stand for are the Massa- Massachusetts Association of School Committees, which has a joint conference with the Massasit- Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. So this was attended by school committee members and superintendents from across the Commonwealth. And, um, the other two participants should feel free to chime in whenever, but it was a really, it was my first time attending, because I'm new to the school committee. But it was, um, you know, several days of, uh, a lot of very, very interesting presentations, and, uh, giving us some crucial information about several things, including, uh, social and emotional learning, uh, which is one of, uh, the focuses, um, the school committee is working on right now. Um, I also, uh, went to sessions like School Law 101, um, where I learned quite a lot. But there were some resolutions, uh, that were passed at this, um, at this meeting during a delegate, delegate assembly. And so I just thought I would say what those resolutions were. Um, one of them was a resolution that we actually passed as a school committee against raising the cap on charter schools. And, um, as you all, I'm sure, are aware, um, that was, uh, that question, um, was voted down, uh, in the election. Um, is that only yesterday, or really? It feels like such a long time ago. I was gonna say yesterday, I thought that can't be right. Okay, so another resolution that, um, they passed, uh, was on the, uh, foundation budget, concerned the foundation budget. Uh, a commission was established to review the foundation budget, um, to, uh, and the findings were actually, uh, were actually given, um, to the General Counsel, uh, in 2015. But among the recommendations that that commission had were, um, more accurately calculating the cost of students in special education, which is hugely important, really crucial. Um, and to establish adequate and equitable funding, um, for school districts acco- across the Commonwealth. So one of the resolutions that was passed was, uh, calling upon the legislature to enact the recommendations of the foundation budget into law. Uh, another resolution was, uh, concerned, um, a tax reform ballot question that may appear, um, on the ballot in 2018. Um, and it has to do with, um, uh, taxing, um, the extremely wealthy. So, here's the resolution. I won't read the whole thing, but just the, um, important parts of it. Um, "The Massach- Massachusetts Association of School Committees, um, resolves to explore ways to promote social and economic, economic equity through a ballot initiative that would seek additional revenue only from, uh, tax reform affecting the state's wealthiest residents." Some of you, um, may know this as the four percent tax, uh, proposal for, um, people making over a million dollars a year, and only the, uh, amount over a million would be taxed at the additional rate of four percent. So, you'd get to, you know, keep your first million. All right, and the final resolution that was passed, um, has to do with something that I just mentioned, which is the social and emotional well-being of students. And the resolution was that the MASC, um, uh, will be directed to deploy, uh, resources of the association independent, uh, independently and in collaboration with other organizations to gather resources, identify strategies, and im-... and improve public awareness of the importance of addressing social, emotional, social and emotional well-being of students and will also work on policy initiatives toward that end. So those are the resolutions that were passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. So moving right along, Superintendent has requested creation of a part-time social-emotional learning position for the district. And I know that this recommendation has the support of both the Finance Subcommittee and the Health and Wellness Subcommittee. So I would move approval of the role description that we have in front of us. Moved by Walker, seconded by Craighead, any discussion?
Yes. Two points. One, the key responsibilities where it says the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition or the Quincy Substance Abuse Prevention, that was added in? I'm not sure where that comes from.
Superintendent.
Okay, so that I would move, I mean, I don't know why that would be in there, particularly because we're working with the Milton Substance Abuse Coalition, but anyway.
I don't know why that was.
Yeah, I, I don't, that didn't get through any vetting that I'm aware of. So if we could follow up on that, not to hold up the thing. And then the other thing is, is I just want to be careful with the wording around this, is that it's not creating a new position, it is accepting a grant for a part-time stipend position. I just, we're talking a lot about positions in our presentations. This is not a new position that's being created. It's a grant, part-time stipend position specifically for this.
It, the funding source really doesn't matter. It's a new position as far as the district is concerned. We don't have this role currently. The superintendent has recommended that we create this role. The funding source really doesn't matter, whether it was general fund, grant, Title I, doesn't matter.
Well, I, I would, and we don't have to go back and forth, but I would disagree with you in the fact that in terms of our viewing public, we are not creating a new position. We are taking opportunity of the grant that was given to us for one year for a small amount of money to do this. This is not a new position that we'll carry forth because it's grant-funded.
We'll actually see when we talk about the budget.
Well, I know, we have plans for that, but I'm saying for this particular, this is a job description for a specific grant. Just like when we had the MFE Grant Writer, it was a specific grant for a specific job. So I just want us to be careful because this is different because of the funding source. It's specific for this, can't be used for anything else, and there are specific guidelines that go along with the grant for it. So I don't want anyone out there thinking we created a new position. We're just using grant that somebody applied for and that we got. So I think that that's important, especially as it's a part-time stipend position. And we typically approve new positions. I don't know that we approved new job descriptions. That's okay, but going forward, does that mean we would approve every grant or stipend opportunity we get? Like we did ten thousand for the strategic plan a while ago, we approved the amount, we didn't approve what that looked like. So I just want us to be careful when something's a grant or if something is off-budget year, how we approve it and what does that mean for other positions or programs that come up.
Okay, as the chair, I'll take the last word and then we'll move the motion.
Does anyone else have a response?
Well, no, I mean, I, I'll, I'll, I just, I mean, before you do that, but I, I, I do echo Kristin that, you know, even people reporting on this position or people viewing it, that it's important to know that for this, you know, we voted the budget and it's not like we're adding this.
Right.
You know, and I do think that that, you know, from a fiscal, you know, detailed information point for the community at large to know is that, you know, I mean, it's, it's a, it's filling a, a need that, that, that we have and it's great that then we have this grant money. But, you know, for clarity's sake, that it's, it's a position that we're creating because we've got the grant money to be able to, to do it, which is great. I do echo that.
Okay. In, in instance where we create a position that's going to be paid on our payroll, it's a new role. We actually have the money to cover it and everyone should be clear on that. So we have a grant, but we're creating a role that wasn't there before. Okay, on the motion, all in favor? It's unanimous, thank you.
Can we just make a note to ask Mary about the Quincy Substance Abuse? I don't know why they're making that.
And next I have vendor warrants, Dr. Craighead, could I call on you?
Yes, thank you, I was going to say I don't have the motion. Okay, move to approve vendor warrant number fourteen dated October sixth, twenty sixteen in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Move to approve vendor warrant number sixteen dated October twentieth, twenty sixteen in the amount of two hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous?
It's unanimous.
All right, move to approve vendor warrant number seventeen dated October twenty-seventh, twenty sixteen in the amount of five hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars even.
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous?
Five zero one.
Oh, five zero one?
Walker abstaining.
Oh, okay. Okay, move to approve vendor warrant number eighteen dated November third, twenty sixteen in the amount of one hundred eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-nine cents.
Second.
All in favor? Walker abstained, so it's five zero one. Can we wait on the one for tonight?
We can.
All right.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question about the warrants?
Sure.
So signing them, I know that sometimes there's an issue with people signing them and I wanted to bring that up as a concern. Like for example, I'll be out of the country next week. So if there's only four of us who sign and I'm out of the country, then the bills aren't going to get paid. I'm not usually out of the country, but I will be next week. So I just wanted to put that on the agenda for further discussion or maybe at Finance Subcommittee about how we can ensure that warrants get signed and in terms of if people have concerns about signing them. I'd like us to have a discussion about it.
I just asked that, I, so I, I did have a conversation with Dr. Patek and I was going to bring a suggestion to the Finance Subcommittee, then to bring to the Full Slip Committee about the warrants.
Great minds think alike.
I'd like to discuss it with the Finance Subcommittee.
Great. Dr. Donahue, Policy Subcommittee?
Great, so we'll start with.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt that, we put health and wellness before that.
Oh, we did.
We did.
We put it way up there, I'm sorry.
And the only reason I'm interrupting, I did ask Dr. Donahue if he would mind if I did this. At, maybe at nine o'clock, we have a few viewing members left. And I'm not saying nothing else, the other things aren't important, but this is timely. So I just wanted to try to reach as many people as I could.
And I apologize, I put it right after the superintendent's report.
I thought you did, yep. So I'll be brief. A couple of weeks ago, I gave you a report on the event safeguarding our kids in risky times. It was an event that was presented to over two hundred and fifty parents, staff and residents. And I just want to recap the comments that were made on the evaluations that were done from about a hundred and seventy attendees. So not everybody did one, but about a hundred and seventy. Oh, and it never hurts to remind the viewing public, if there's any left, that.